Ready to start?
Okay, with that, I will call our regular meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one Vista Consolidated Meeting. The meeting is now called to order. The meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic meetings consistent with State of California Executive Order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty. In the event a quorum of the City Council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage that is not corrected within ten minutes, the meeting will automatically be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled evening meeting of the City Council. Items on the agenda that the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. With that, we will have a roll call by our City Clerk Kathy Valdez.
Thank you. Please state your hair when I call your name. Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Franklin.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Present.
Councilmember Melinda's.
Here.
All members are present. Also joining us are City Manager Patrick Johnson and City Attorney Daryl Piper. Thank you.
Thank you. The Brown Act notices simultaneous meeting compensation. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of a hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance two thousand six dash one. For members of the public that are participating through Zoom, you may raise your hand to indicate you'd like to speak by clicking the raise hand feature on your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the agenda cover sheet. You may only speak on an item once and public comment is limited to three minutes. Approve the agenda with, is next with the City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening to the agenda.
We have two presentations this evening. And first is that Councilmember Contreras has invited Rudy Moreno to provide a presentation on Hero Inc. So I'll turn that over to Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much, Mayor Ritter. I appreciate Rudy joining us to let us know a little bit more about his organization. And I just want to preface the presentation by saying, you know, none of us expected to be in a pandemic. And when it comes to youth development, we've seen a lot of our nonprofits struggling to maintain what they had before. And obviously, COVID nineteen has brought many challenges. And, you know, what I would like to do is just for the information to be brought to council. So we know a little bit more about some of these organizations that have been working so hard to ensure that we are creating model citizens. And by showing our youth that they can create a future self for them that is one that they may have never, ever, ever thought of before. So thank you so much, Rudy, for coming before the council. And I want to turn it over to you. And I'm very excited to see your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council Members. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of our nonprofit, helping everyone reach opportunity, also known as Hero. I'm Rudy Moreno, a Vista native who was proudly raised in the District One area. Upon graduating high school, I enlisted into the Air Force and honorably served for twenty years as a combat engineer. Upon my retirement, I wanted to serve my community by mentoring our youth. The world's greatest air force instilled in me two skill sets. Number one, how to fight and win. And number two, how to mentor young airmen to become future senior leaders. I figured I'd put the two together and start a youth program known as Hero. Through mentoring, boxing, and fitness, I can now develop our youth to become champions in life, both in and out of the ring. I spent the past four years donating my time and money into our youth. Unfortunately, due to the current pandemic, it can soon end. That is why I'm here before you, asking for your assistance to help save. Now at this time, I'd like to present our Hero Program. Next slide. Our story. Hero Inc. is a nonprofit organization established to give youth a fighting chance. We are providing an outlet to low-income families who cannot afford the high cost of traditional gyms and/or organized sports. Through our partnership with the Vista Boxing Club, our youth are better served by coming together and producing something that is going to positively influence and strengthen them to reach their full potential. Hero utilizes boxing as a vehicle to empower young people and positively affect other aspects of their life. Next slide. Teamwork. Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much. Next slide. Our foundation. Hero Inc. was established in two thousand seventeen by Rudy, myself, and my wife, Kenya Moreno. Rudy, a Vista, California native, retired Air Force combat veteran, knows the hardships of a life lived around alcohol, drugs, gangs, and domestic abuse. Rudy has experienced firsthand the negative effects on the family and the individual. Through confronting his own personal challenges, Rudy learned the path to success and happiness was to become involved in activities that allowed a positive outlet for his suffering. He achieved this through boxing and fitness. The opportunities Coach Rudy sees pave the way for his desire to help others while giving back to his community. Next slide. There's no greater reward than working from your heart and making a difference. Next slide. Our mission. Our mission is to instill discipline, encouragement, and accountability in our at-risk youth. Through physical activity, we are empowering our youth to feel physically and mentally strong. Happiness and physical fitness are key factors to good physical and mental health. You hold the key to your own happiness. We've made it our goal to use that key to help unlock your full potential. Next slide. So, last January, prior to the pandemic, this is fourteen-year-old Frankie Garcia reading a letter to his surprise that he would be attending the two thousand twenty National Silver Gloves Championships. Through generous donations from family, friends, and our community, he would have an all-expense-paid trip to Independence, Missouri to compete at the championships. Frankie qualified to attend the Silver Glove Championships by winning the number-one spot in our region. He was the number-one youth for his age and weight among five states. He would be representing Region Eight at the national championships. Frankie did end up making it to the finals, but unfortunately, he came up short against the more experienced defending champion. This whole experience for Frankie was absolutely priceless. Play the video, please. Is that my volume or? Okay, I guess we're having volume trouble. So basically, Frankie was reading this letter to his surprise. And it was basically just telling him what I told you guys, that he received an all-expense-paid trip to represent Region Eight in the state of California at the National Silver Gloves. Next slide. Our vision. We envision a future where the possibilities and opportunities for each individual are limitless. We strive to cultivate a positive outlook and environment for our members by strengthening the individual, improving communication, promoting self-esteem, and advancing the individual through the achievement of physical fitness and self-development. We believe connecting these common links creates a positive backdrop for developing the essential skills and sound decision-making needed through one's life. Next slide. A boy comes to me with a spark of interest. I feed the spark, and it becomes a flame. I feed the flame, and it becomes a fire. I feed the fire, and it becomes a roaring blaze. This is Joseph Williams. We met when he was a high school wrestler for Rancho Buena Vista. He came to me wanting to learn how to box. It was then when I became his coach and mentor. Our journey together led him to become an eight-time amateur MMA champion and then turned pro to become California Cage Wars one hundred and fifty-five-pound lightweight champion with a three-and-oh record. Joe was that boy. Next slide. Our values. We are committed to providing a safe, positive, drug- and alcohol-free training facility to our members. We are committed to the improvement of mental and physical health through fitness and exercise. We are committed to instilling positive development of an individual's well-being while promoting and encouraging integrity, respect, morals, and community involvement. Next slide. The power of community to create health is far greater than any physician, clinic, or hospital. Next slide. Well, this current pandemic. COVID nineteen has disrupted our society, but has also created an opportunity to improve our community's health by transforming exercise and fitness into the primary weapon in our fight against viruses and disease. Next slide. Well, that's my presentation of our Hero Program. Reaching out to you guys, to the City Council for assistance. You know, we are, financially, we are on life support. We probably have the next couple of months to pay our lease. If things do not clear up within these next two months, I really don't know what was going to happen with our program, and it would be a shame for it to come to an end. That's why I'm reaching out to you all.
So do we have any questions from the council?
Looking to see if I have any. I don't see anybody answering any questions, but I've always supported you, Rudy, and I know you do a great job over there and with the kids.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope we can be successful. And maybe, I know sometimes on Facebook you have where you raise money. So maybe now that this is on the council agenda, maybe you can put that back on again, and maybe you can raise some through that way. That would be one suggestion, so. Any with that, other than that, I don't see any other questions. Okay.
I would like to say something, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and then after that, Councilmember Contreras had something. So, Councilmember Melinda's?
Yes, thank you so much, Rudy, for that presentation and just everything you do. As many of you know, before I joined the council, I was working in drug and alcohol treatment. And I know folks that were referred over to your program. And it is so important to have programs like these in the community, especially because you are countering so many of the negative influences that are in someone's life, right? Whether that be drugs and alcohol, domestic violence, gang affiliation involvement. All of those quality-of-life issues are things that our council fights against, right, every time we come together. And so to see you in our community, providing these resources, this encouragement, the discipline and accountability for youth and people who need it, I think that this is a really valuable program, and I would support any efforts that would allow you to create, you know, a sustainable option for the future. Because, you know, you being there and you being successful allows other people in our community to be successful. So thank you so much for everything that you do. I just want to let you know that I support you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you. And I just want to say, Rudy, I really appreciate you bringing this information to the council. One of our goals as a city council is to provide more opportunities for youth development and encouragement of youth development. Because we know at the end of the day, when we build up character in our youth, we are creating a phenomenal tax base for the future, right? And so it's all part of our economic development as well. I just want to say that I look forward to working with any council members who would like to take seriously youth development. And perhaps in the future, there could be another discussion where we come together as a council and we figure out how we are going to support our youth here in the city of Vista by different means than we have done in the past. So I just want to say thank you so much. And I know you and I will continue to have conversations. And I look forward to future discussions with my colleagues that allow us to really meet our city goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. So with that, we will, Councilmember Contreras also invited Tino Candela to provide a presentation on Tiffany's International Soccer Organization. So with that, we will go to, back to Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much again. You know, I am really appreciative of having such an incredible council where, you know, we want to work together. We heard, you know, from Rudy. And now I want to hear from an organization that has worked really hard here in the city of Vista and has created a bi-national opportunity for our youth. And they would like to share a little bit of information and what they're doing to help promote youth development here in the city of Vista. And of course, with COVID nineteen being what it is, this is also an organization that has, you know, looked at how can they overcome the obstacles that this virus has brought to them and to all of us here in this community. Tino, I thank you so much for coming before the council.
Was that an introduction of Tino?
So Tino is going to be speaking to us in Spanish, and we are going to attempt interpretation. So I just wanted to give him the cue that it is his time to go.
Section Mayor, Lily Montes has been nice enough to offer to interpret for us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask you?
Sí.
Okay. Ah, pues muy buenas tardes a todo el council. Les agradezco de antemano esta oportunidad que nos están dando para nosotros. Nosotros somos Tiffany's International Soccer Organization. Somos una organización nonprofit.
Tino?
Perdón?
Me permite, me permite, tiene que tomar cosas para poder, para poder traducir.
Okay, claro que sí. Disculpe.
¿Me puede comenzar?
Okay, antes que nada, buenas tardes a todos los del council. Les agradezco de antemano la oportunidad que nos están dando para poder explicar algunas cosas de nuestra organización.
Good evening, council members. I want to thank you in advance for giving me the opportunity to present the information about my organization.
Okay. Ah, nuestra organización es una organización nonprofit que ya hemos estado trabajando con la ciudad de Vista de hace más de, prácticamente ya vamos para casi veinte años. Hemos estado trabajando con las comunidades.
Our organization is a nonprofit that has been with, working with the city for over twenty years.
Y nuestro mayor es desempeño nosotros, por ejemplo, estamos viendo aquí de las situaciones que nosotros tenemos en nuestro, en nuestra ciudad. Más que nada, es el problema, por ejemplo, con mucha, muchos de los niños que contamos en esta ciudad que son niños que no tienen varios recursos para poder pertenecer a nuestros programas de fútbol soccer. Y queremos buscar la manera de cómo ayudarlos.
So one of our primary focus is to work with the underrepresented community of youth that are, don't necessarily have the resources available. So our program allows, works with these athletes to give them an opportunity to participate.
Nuestra comunidad es un poco complicada en el aspecto de nuestra cultura. Pero hemos trabajado muy fuerte con todas estas personas, tanto en el aspecto deportivo como las exigencias en el aspecto educativo. Ah, nuestra meta de nosotros es ver que cada uno de los padres de nuestra ciudad, sus hijos puedan tener las oportunidades de poder participar en nuestros programas en el aspecto de deportivo y en el aspecto de la educación.
Our goal is to be able to provide opportunities for kids and for parents to be able to see their, their children thrive on the athletes as well as on the educational. We're in a very complex community, and this is something that we strive to provide.
Bueno, por ejemplo, nuestra historia que nosotros tenemos nos ha dado grandes satisfacciones en el aspecto de que hemos podido ayudar a muchos de esos niños que prácticamente han sido desplazados de, por ejemplo, cuando buscan la oportunidad con otros clubes que por la falta económica no les permiten entrar o por la falta de talento futbolístico tampoco les dan la oportunidad. Nosotros lo que aquí hacemos es reclutar a todos esos niños que no tienen oportunidad y brindarles esa oportunidad de una manera u otra. ¿Cuál es la razón de nosotros? Para nosotros, nuestro lema es de que todos los niños de Vista tienen que estar participando en un deporte para poder así ayudar tanto a la ciudad de Vista, ayudar como la persona, como ya nosotros mismos, de que el vandalismo aquí en esta ciudad se aminore, que no crezca más.
So we've been able to help kids participate that haven't been able to participate in other clubs for either for different reasons such as income or other reasons. We, our goal is to work with as many kids as possible. And we believe that all kids should be able to participate in some sort of athletic programs as this could help with less vandalism and other good outcomes by having kids participate in our program.
Okay, ahorita mismo también tenemos la misión de poder impulsar nosotros también a los jugadores a los jugadores que tenemos a que se sometan más y se enfoquen más en el aspecto estudiantil, verdad? Como primera opción después de esa, sería el deporte, verdad? Hemos estado trabajando con ciertas organizaciones de las cuales estamos viendo, por ejemplo, para los muchachos que van saliendo para ir a colegio. Hemos trabajando con el señor Hugo Salcedo, que fue una persona representante de la Federación de Estados Unidos en FIFA por diez años y tiene como unos programas de fundación de ayuda y becas para los muchachos que quieran participar en equipos de más arriba y poder entrar al colegio obsecándole, por ejemplo, becas para que puedan ellos ser parte de esta academia donde ellos pueden realizar sus estudios y poder desarrollar también su deporte.
They've been able to motivate and focus on motivate athletes to also focus in school as well as sports. And they work with Hugo Salcedo, who is a major sports advocate that partners with them to provide scholarships when students graduate. They have a sports academy, but also focuses on the educational aspects as well as athletes. And it helps these individuals thrive in both aspects.
La otra opción es, como le digo, tratamos de formar más que, por ejemplo, deportistas. Tratamos de formar personas en los niños con respeto, con humildad, y que tengan un enfoque más que nada con una mentalidad limpia para que ellos puedan realizar ciertas, como se llama, actividades que le puedan beneficiar en un futuro. Y como se vuelve a repetir, hemos bruchado bastante, por ejemplo, con muchos jóvenes que han estado ahí de vandalismo. Hemos estado trabajando invitándolos a que se formen parte de nuestros equipos en lugar de que ellos se formen parte de las gangas. Hemos logrado varios objetivos en ese aspecto. Hemos reclutado a muchos muchachos que, pues afortunadamente, se han salido de las drogas. Los hemos tenido aquí jugando. Formamos la Liga de Adultos para que esos mismos muchachos, una vez que crezcan, puedan continuar con el deporte y no se queden pensando qué vamos a hacer o cuál es nuestra siguiente meta. Entonces nosotros, la Liga de Fútbol nos ayuda de los adultos también porque, porque hay cierto tiempo en que los muchachos pueden jugar en la Liga Juvenil. Entonces tenemos la Liga de Fútbol de Adultos donde nosotros seguimos reclutándolos y todavía le seguimos insistiendo en que ellos puedan participar o buscar la opción en algún colegio.
In addition, they, they help kids and instill other values such as respect and humility that will help them in the future. It'll benefit them in the future. They work with kids that are, that have previously been in other bad steps such as vandalism and gangs. They encourage kids to join the program. And this leads to just better future for their, the athletes that they work with. And they also, they've created an adult league. They help recruit individuals, and this just keeps kids off other, other, other bad routes. Instead, they get into his league and it helps them steer them in the right direction.
Sí, nosotros contamos ahorita aquí en la ciudad de Vista con diferentes tipos de, como le podemos explicar, como tipo ligas. La dividimos en lo que es la Liga de Adultos, la que es la Liga de Niños, la que es la Liga de Mujeres, y también tenemos el programa competitivo que participa en la Liga Presidio. Todo esto es, por ejemplo, como un círculo para todos de donde vamos prácticamente mandando jugadores. Vamos a decir en la Liga de Niños, los niños con más talento, los estamos enviando a que sean partícipes con los equipos presidio y tengan una mejor, este, un mejor nivel de juego para poder participar contra otros clubes, contra otras ciudades, en fin, diferentes lados. En la Liga de Adultos, nosotros tenemos la Liga de Adulto aquí prácticamente, como se les explicó antes, para ayudar a los jóvenes que ya cumplen, que son mayores de dieciocho años, continúen jugando y no se desvienen a, pues andar de delincuentes o andar, pues ya saben, lo primero que buscan es tomar, se relajo, todo eso. Entonces, esas son de las maneras que nosotros estamos trabajando desde que están, que son juveniles hasta que son adultos. Aún a esos muchachos no los soltamos. Continuamos trabajando con ellos.
So Tiffany's club is divided into different sectors. They have the adult league, they have a kids league for youth. They also have women's league, and they have a more competitive league, which they recommend kids that are ready for that level. They help them get into a more competitive by providing them the opportunity to prove, to compete at a higher level. The Tiffany's adult league focuses on kids after the age of eighteen, once they reach the adult age, that they have the opportunity to keep playing, keep them off the streets, and reduce vandalism and just have a better future overall by providing the adult soccer league.
Y como ustedes ven, pues nosotros hacemos todo el esfuerzo para que todos estos muchachos siempre permanezcan ocupados en este deporte, verdad? Y siempre inculcándole cosas positivas para su futuro. Y prácticamente, como le digo, nosotros nos gusta porque como hemos hablado con los padres y le hemos explicado la ayuda también de ellos para que nos ayuden a motivar los muchachos que estén aquí. Por qué? Para poder tener una ciudad limpia aquí fuera de drogas, que es un poco difícil, ah. Entonces automáticamente nosotros no contamos con ninguna fundación que nos apoye y no contamos con ninguna organización o sponsors que podamos a decir, pues tenemos el apoyo de estos sponsors para poder solventar gastos, poder solventar y la ayuda para todos estos jugadores, ya que prácticamente de lo mismo nosotros, que somos una de las ligas más económicas de todo lo que es el Condado de San Diego, de esa misma manera, con los pocos recursos que nosotros recibimos, tratamos de ayudar prácticamente a más de cien cincuenta muchachos hasta le damos becas hasta de treinta muchachos por temporada en la recreacional, verdad? Y ayudamos también a los competitivos. Entonces, todo lo que nosotros a veces prácticamente estamos haciendo es esforzaros un poquito más y desafortunadamente, le digo, hay muchos jóvenes.
Tino? I can, I can translate up to this point. We make efforts to keep kids occupied and keep them motivated. We don't have any sponsors at this time. We're one of the most affordable leagues in San Diego County, and we do our best to provide as many resources and scholarships with the, with just the income that we receive. And we're the most affordable in San Diego County. And this is, we try to help as many athletes as possible.
I think we'll wait just a moment and see.
I think we'll wait just a moment and see if we can get Tino back on to, to finish up. Looks like he might be trying to log back in. But the slide that we're on is showing the percentage. Oh, there he is.
Ah, disculpen, no sé qué pasó, se nos fue el internet aquí donde estamos y no pudimos este, volvemos a conectar. Bueno, disculpen a esta interrupción, pero a como, no sé si este Lili escuchaste lo que dije anteriormente.
Um, la última parte que escuchamos fue la parte que estaba diciendo que ayuda a los jóvenes probando becas.
Sí, pues prácticamente como digo, estamos ayudando a muchos de los niños que puedan estar dentro de este, de estos programas, ayudándole con becas. Por medio de nosotros, como le digo, nosotros no contamos con ningún apoyo, ninguna fundación ni de ningún sponsor. Pero sin embargo, con los pocos recursos que van pagando los padres hemos podido ayudar a otros niños para que puedan participar de otros padres que están todavía más mal en el aspecto económico. Pero se nos hace difícil porque son demasiados niños, demasiados padres y más con esta pandemia va a estar un poco más difícil para estas temporadas que vienen para que muchos niños puedan regresar a hacer deporte.
Uh, he mentioned that we, they do their best to provide um scholarships for as many kids as possible. They don't have any sponsors. All they have is they use the money that from other fees paid by other parents. Um, but unfortunately with the pandemic, it's gonna be very much more difficult to provide resources or help for more, more athletes.
Entonces ahorita más que nada, por ejemplo, nosotros estamos trabajando también, por ejemplo, en el, con la Clínica de la Comunidad.
Quiere que pasemos a la próxima, disculpa.
Ah, sí, por favor.
Quiere que pasemos a la próxima página. Next slide.
Next. Okay, bueno, aquí lo que estamos mostrando prácticamente también es la misma ayuda, pero en, en el aspecto lo estamos mostrando como las divisiones que tenemos nosotros y en cual nosotros hemos estado ayudando con los scholarship de cada uno, las cantidades de cada jugador, por ejemplo, en el aspecto de las niñas también, los scholarship que hemos estado ayudando. Y abajo tenemos en el área con la cantidad de jugadores que tenemos. Como ustedes ven, nosotros contamos con el ochenta y cinco por ciento que son de aquí de la Ciudad de Vista, los demás vienen de las otras ciudades como es Ocean Sa- San Marcos y Escondido.
The, the slide shows the number of, of particip- participation and, and scholarships. You could see on the slide, it has for, for the girls league. Um, also it shows a vast majority, the eighty-five percent is participation is from Vista. And um you could see the other cities, Ocean Side, San Marcos and Escondido. And this shows their um scholarships breakdown. Next slide.
Next, por favor, okay. Entonces nuestro propósito, por ejemplo, en este aspecto es una, yo como presidente de, de Tiffany's, eh creo que muchos en la ciudad ya me, ya me conocen, ¿verdad? Tal vez porque soy a veces muy problemático, pero bueno. Este, la situación de esto es que nosotros hemos estado trabajando por a muchos años aquí con la Ciudad de Vista y pues prácticamente eh lo que yo necesito en este aspecto es que la Ciudad de Vista en conjunto con nosotros trabajemos más unidos para poder ayudar a todo este tipo de, de jugadores, de estos niños, de estas personas. ¿Para qué? Para que podamos tener, por ejemplo, en lugar de más delincuencia tengamos más deportistas, mejores eh estudiantes y ese es nuestro propósito que nosotros queremos hacer. Estamos trabajando también con este, con muchas este, por ejemplo, otras organizaciones que nos puedan ayudar para poder elevar tanto de los niveles educativos como los niveles eh del deporte.
As a president, I, of Tiffany's, I know I'm well known a- around Vista. Um, my, I'm proposing that we unite to help you, the youth and instead of having higher rates, have higher crime rates, we have um more athletes that are successful. And I'm looking to partner um and gain support from the city and other organizations to um help my uh organization.
Podemos pasar a la otra, tráis.
Next slide.
Sí. Okay, pues aquí como estamos viendo tenemos fotos de los niños que participan aquí en nuestra Liga.
Here's some pictures of some of the, the boys and youth that participate in our league.
Continuamos.
Next slide.
Igualmente, son niños que, por ejemplo, nosotros tratamos de motivar a los niños dándoles trofeos individuales a ellos en cada temporada. Esos son niños de los equipos recreacionales que nosotros tenemos. Nuestros coaches son coaches que trabajan con estos niños, pero son, todos son coaches voluntarios, ¿verdad? No tenemos un, a coaches que tengamos que nosotros que pagarles para que nos puedan ayudar con estos niños. La razón se las explicamos claramente, por qué razón nosotros no podemos pagarle a los coaches, porque desafortunadamente, como le digo, vamos a decir, de este equipo tenemos esta cantidad, pero son dos o tres niños que se les da un scholarship para poder ayudar a los padres.
Here's another picture of another team there from the recreational league. We try to motivate them by providing individual trophies. Um, we have coaches that are volunteers. Unfortunately, they don't have the funds to pay and um all the, the money and funds that they receive from the players go to fund other players that are um lower income or need the, the resources. So they just use volunteer coaches. Next slide.
Yes. Igualmente aquí contamos con este equipo que es mixteado de niños y niñas, ¿verdad? De la misma manera lo trabajamos con ellos, igualmente los coaches. Nosotros los coaches que, con los cual contamos nosotros son coaches certificados por la, la asociación de aquí de California, ¿verdad? Todos los coaches los obligamos a que tengan sus huellas por parte de la policía porque eh queremos que todo esté en regla. Pero todos estos coaches igualmente se les exige a los competitivos, igualmente se les exige a los recreacionales.
So here's another picture of a mixed team, um, a COA team and they, all the coaches that work with them as well are certified and as well as the refs. We require that everyone is fingerprinted and goes through a background, background checks to make sure that everything, everyone follows the rules. Um, and again, it's volunteers. Next slide.
Next, yes. Okay, next, please. Okay, aquí lo que nosotros estamos mostrando ya, por ejemplo, en la Liga de, de Adultos, así como ustedes ven, contamos con estas divisiones que son la mayor, que contamos con dos equipos. De primera contamos con otros dos equipos y de ahí contamos en los juegos de las tardes que son de siete contra siete, que tenemos la división abierta, que es la open. Tenemos para los mayores de treinta y tenemos para los adultos mayores de cuarenta, ¿verdad? Igualmente nosotros contamos con un ochenta por ciento de, de los jugadores que son de aquí de la Ciudad de Vista. La mayoría igualmente bien de otras ciudades.
This slide shows the breakdown of their different leagues. They have the main, the major league and that they have twelve teams. They have the first division with twelve teams. They have um open, adult league, they have over thirty and over forty. And the breakdown below shows that the majority, eighty percent of the participants are Vista residents and you can also see the breakdown of other cities' participation in the league. Next slide. Next.
I think this might be the conclusion of the uh, the slide. Well, I wanna take, I wanna thank uh Tino and Tiffany's League for presenting us some information, breakdown of their league and how many uh, uh individuals that are from Vista that are uh receiving scholarships uh to be able to, to compete. Um, I just wanna say, you know, when I was younger, I have no idea how uh my parents were able to, to fund uh competitive sports for my brother and myself and um but I definitely see the discipline that comes out of that. And uh, Tino, te quiero agradecer uh por uh explicarle a la ciudad lo que estás haciendo y a ver lo que podemos hacer uh en el futuro para tener uh más recursos para nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias.
Puedo decir uno más, uno último. Bueno, a día de semana les agra- les agradezco a todos, por favor, haber escuchado y me disculpas por la, los problemitas que tenemos aquí de internet. Pero lo único prácticamente que nosotros necesitamos aquí es que la ciudad nos voltee a ver un poquito más a nosotros, que hemos estado trabajando con la comunidad y aquí estaremos siempre trabajando con ellos. Pero lo único que necesitamos un poquito más de apoyo de la ciudad, ¿verdad? Más que nada que vean lo que estamos haciendo y que todo lo estamos haciendo más que nada por el bien de la ciudad, por el bien de los niños y por el bien estudiantil. Okay, gracias.
Gracias, Tino. So Tino is just thanking the council uh and uh for the presentation and stating that uh he would like for the city uh to work in collaboration and partnership uh so that we can further uh the goals of this organization, which is to ensure that all uh Vistins have opportunities uh to uh become uh great either athletes or uh just great people, well-rounded and disciplined and looking forward to a future uh where, you know, we can build this community and reduce vagrancy, reduce crime, reduce vandalism. Um, and that really starts uh with getting this message across to our youth. Uh, thank you so much, Tino. Have a good rest of your day and I, I'm sure we'll be in communication. Hablamos.
Thank you to everybody. All right, bye.
Thank you, Councilmember Contreras. Um, with that, we are moving on to our consent calendar. Um, the recommendations on the um following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by using the raise hand feature or by pressing star nine now. The items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have six consent items this evening. Would any of our city council members want to remove an item? Seeing head shaking, no, then I will um.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd make a motion, we adopt the consent calendar.
I might need a request, you know, okay, I would need to know if we have any requests from the public. So a city clerk.
We do not have any requests from the public.
And then I would look for a second on our consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, um, so um please um, um, cast your votes.
This teacher vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez.
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green.
Aye.
Mayor Ritter.
Aye.
The consent calendar passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, everyone. That takes us to our um public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. Um, the public hearing is now open. This public hearing is to consider adoption of a resolution of necessity for eight oh two South Santa Fe Avenue for street reconfiguration and improvement purposes. So um the public hearing is now open. Our right-of-way agent will provide the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or by pressing star nine now and speakers will be called upon after the presentations.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Also joining me is our outside counsel, Gina Danner. For your consideration this evening, staff presents a resolution of necessity for easements at eight oh two South Santa Fe Avenue for street reconfiguration and improvement purposes. Next slide, please. The Paseo Santa Fe Streetscape Improvement Project is a signature capital improvement project of the city to decrease light and revitalize the South Santa Fe Avenue corridor. The project has three phases in total and each phase includes a traffic roundabout. The final phase three covers South Santa Fe Avenue from about Terrace Drive to Civic Center Drive and includes a roundabout at Palavista Drive. The project's goals include improving the flow of traffic, fostering further commercial and mixed-use development and transforming the downtown district into a vibrant, walkable destination. The project reduces the vehicular roadway width of South Santa Fe Avenue and expands pedestrian mobility. It provides parking on both sides of the street, has undergrounded overhead utilities and upgraded sewer, gas and electric infrastructure. It installs new curbs, gutters, crosswalks and enhanced sidewalks with decorative elements, including landscaping, streetlights, street signs, pedestrian furniture and public art. The project was designed to fit into the existing South Sa- South Santa Fe Avenue's public street right-of-way as much as possible. Where there is a roundabout and each phase has one, additional right-of-way is required to accommodate the wider circle. Next slide, please. In order to complete the project, two easements are sought from the property at eight oh two South Santa Fe Avenue, the former Walgreens site. These easements will not impact any structures on the property nor the use of the structures on the property. First, a permanent public, street and utility easement measuring one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven square feet and located at the northern corner of the property is required for the completion of the Palavista Roundabout. This easement is shown here on the map as the orange shaded area. The existing driveway at this easement location will be relocated over the city-owned adjacent property to feed into the top of the roundabout for two-way access into and out of the subject property. Secondly, to facilitate the roundabout and streetscape work, which includes transitioning the property to the new improvements, the city also needs a temporary construction easement of five thousand five hundred and ninety-four square feet that runs along the property's north side and along its South Santa Fe Avenue frontage. The maximum term for this temporary easement is twelve months. And this temporary easement is shown on the map as the blue shaded area. To address the comments that the property owner included in their letter dated January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, a copy of which you have received, staff would like to share the following points. While the owner has raised their concerns about various project design aspects, the city has addressed most of these concerns with them during discussions, meetings and other communications since two thousand nineteen. To address these concerns, the city conducted multiple traffic circulation studies of the subject property regarding large truck access, one of which showed that the subject property's existing configuration does not support eighteen-wheeler trucks without conflicts. Therefore, further studies use smaller delivery truck models. These exhibits and information were shared with the owner's representatives, including their engineer. Furthermore, this stretch of South Santa Fe Avenue has a fifteen-ton maximum gross vehicle weight limitation, which largely prohibits eighteen-wheeler trucks. The owner has requested that U-turns be allowed at the major intersection of South Santa Fe Avenue and Civic Center Drive to accommodate southbound traffic access into the subject property. However, due to safety and streetlight timing conflicts, a U-turn at this location is infeasible. Southbound traffic would use the Palavista Roundabout to enter the subject property. The owner has raised concerns about the subject property's existing condition as a one-way exit point at the as a one-way exit point at the northernmost driveway at the Palavista intersection. However, that is the owner's self-imposed restriction. Ingress and egress of this northernmost driveway in the after condition will have sufficient width to accommodate two-way traffic. The owner can reconfigure this driveway through striping and signage, for example, to suit their future use. The property's special use permit for a drive-through expired some time ago due to non-operation. The drive-through use could only be reestablished should the city choose to reauthorize a drive-through business at this location. The city has previously provided the owner's representative and engineer, at their request, numerous construction plans, exhibits, and other information that show that grade transitions, roundabout design, ADA access, drainage, lighting, landscaping, irrigation, and utilities will be properly addressed during construction so that the property in the after condition will meet or improve existing site conditions. Since 2019, the city has discussed and reviewed many of these design items in depth with the owner's representatives, including their engineer. And we can certainly review the items again as may be necessary. Next slide, please. Next, I would like to turn it over to our outside counsel, Gina Danner, who will review the findings for the resolution of necessity.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. In order to adopt a resolution of necessity, the City Council must determine that there are sufficient facts to support the four findings that are up on screen in front of you. So, the four findings are that the public interest and necessity require the proposed project, that the proposed project is located, is planned and located in the manner that will be most compatible to the greatest public good and with the least private injury, that the subject property interests described in the resolution of necessity are necessary for the proposed project, and that the city has made the offer required by Government Code Section 7267.2 to the owners of record. The facts that support each of these findings is set forth in detail in the agenda report before you. The agenda report is incorporated into the record of this proceeding. The issue of compensation is not before you this evening, just these four findings. A forfeit vote is required in order to adopt a resolution of necessity. As Kim stated, I would note that the property owner's representative has submitted a letter of objection to the adoption of the resolution of necessity, and that letter is also incorporated into the record of this proceeding. This concludes our presentation, and we're certainly available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so I believe that at this time we would provide an opportunity for the property owner. But first, I would like to know, do any of us have any, any councilmembers have any questions this time? I don't, I don't believe that the property owner is here tonight, is that correct? Who knows that, city manager?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The council for the property owner submitted an email to the city clerk this evening at 5:43 PM, which stated, "Madam Clerk, please accept our letter and attachment. As our testimony at tonight's hearing, we request that it be made part of the record. We look forward to working with city representatives concerning the proposed project." And as has been indicated, the letter is already part of our record. And Mr. Kovacek, although he was on the screen as a participant at the beginning of the meeting, is no longer there, so I believe the property owner does not intend to have any further presentation other than their letter.
Okay, so then I will put it back to the council if anybody has any questions from the council. Councilmember Green, or Deputy Mayor Green?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there any more speakers on this item, city clerk?
Do you have anyone that's indicated they wish to speak on this item? So, we'll go ahead and close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay, sounds good. And I thank you, Ms. Danner, for that report. Seemings that this meets all four findings required in order to accept this resolution of necessity. I move that we close the public hearing and accept staff's recommendation at this point.
Do I have any other?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Franklin?
I have a question. The diagram does not show the direction of ingress egress on the, I believe it's northbound entrance that would allow access to the rear of the property. Does that allow both entry and exit from that new driveway?
I'll go ahead and address that. It does actually provide two-way access, ingress and egress, over the city's acquired parcel, the ex-battery world property.
So, the major alteration here is, and I'm trying to get all the maps lined up. The, the entryway right now, actually, it's marked at present as exit-only. That way, the whole property's got arrows in the parking lot showing, you know, the clock, or actually, counterclockwise direction of travel, so it's exit-only. So, if they choose, they could actually acquire an additional mode of entry right there, is that correct?
That's correct. It actually improves the access.
Okay, so, you know, I just, anytime we do an eminent domain and take somebody's property, you know, we, I want to point out that the city always works very hard. And I know we've been in negotiations and attempted contact for, I know it's more than a year, and I'd like, just, if you could, tell me how long have we been reaching out to the owner and trying to negotiate an agreement to acquire this parcel?
It's been since 2019, early March of 2019.
So, a substantial period of time. And what the council was briefed on is that we had a significant difficulty in getting a response from the property owner. And that's, that's made things difficult, but I don't think any of us on the council take lightly having to use the eminent domain power. I certainly do not. I absolutely do not like to use it, except under, I believe, this is the prime example, where we're taking a small sliver of someone's access to make the street work. And, you know, I want to point out, for this particular property owner, we all know that this property sits vacant today. We were all there as a council to unveil the new Vista archway that completes the twin arches. And, you know, the quantity of beautification and improvement in value to this particular owner's property is really substantial. We have taken a, you know, a property that the streetscape and surroundings were very blighted, and we have added immeasurably to the value of it and to the beauty of the area. Whoever decides to lease that property or operate a business there is going to have a significantly improved business because of it. And so, with that, I would absolutely second Deputy Mayor Green's motion. I think this is something that we have to do. We're improving access to this owner's property. I don't see, I don't see a functional difference except the improvement. I'm really not sure why they would object. You know, I've read their letter and I don't understand the delay, but we've been working on this for a long time now. It's not a couple of months, it's a couple of years. So, I think it is urgent and I, at this point, and I think we need to go ahead and move forward so we can complete this project. So, I appreciate you taking the time for those comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras?
Well, Councilmember Franklin just had a lot of comments that I would just say spot-on. The city has continuously worked in good faith, and the improvements that are going to be part of this area, it's just, it really is kind of a no-brainer here. And I appreciate the diligent work of our staff to continue to try and work with the property owner, as Councilmember Franklin said. We do not take lightly, I know I don't, having to use the powers that we have for eminent domain. But this is necessary to provide safe travel for vehicles and for pedestrians. And we've been trying for a long time to come up with, you know, some kind of communication where we can get to a point that we can finish our, completely finish our traffic circles. So, since you already seconded it, you know, I don't want to third it, but I'm ready for votes, though.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, did you have something further that you wanted to know? Okay, so seeing no other speakers, then I would, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Green and a second by Councilmember Franklin, so please call the roll call vote.
Thank you. Please state your vote when I call your name. Councilmember Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Green?
Aye.
Mayor Ritter?
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our discussion item. And then, we have one discussion item this evening, and that's the preliminary review of the proposed general plan amendment and zone change at 1205 Melrose Way. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley will provide the staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they can indicate so by using the raise the hand feature or pressing star nine now, and then the speakers will be called upon after staff presentations. So, with that, I'll turn it over to our Engineering and Community Development Director, John Conley.
Thank you very much, Mayor and councilmembers. This is a preliminary review of his own change in general plan amendment. As you know, there's two purposes to these discussion items. One is to provide the council an opportunity to provide any commentary back to the applicant regarding their proposal. And the second, too, is advise the public and the neighboring properties of the proposal at the time of submittal. Next slide, please. So, the subject application tonight is to review a proposal for a general plan amendment and zone change on about two and a half acres. It's located at 1205 Melrose Way. The proposed general plan amendment would modify the land use designation in the general plan from low-density residential, which is two units to the acre, to medium-low-density residential, which allows up to five units per acre in density. Comparably, the zone change would modify the zoning designation from estate residential, which is a half-acre minimum lot size, to a residential zone, which is a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size. The proposal also includes a state density bonus or the application of the state density bonus law to increase the density on the site beyond the R1 zoning in exchange for affordable housing. Next slide, please. This is a map that, or aerial photo, that shows the subject property at 1205 Melrose Way. It's two legal lots with a sliver adjacent parcel, comprises about 2.6 acres. It's 2.57 gross. It includes one single-family residence on the site that's accessed off of Melrose Way. The subject property is just directly west of Centennial Way off of Melrose Way. Surrounding uses include half-acre residential properties to the southwest and part of the north edge of the property, multifamily residential, the Charlemont condominiums to the north, and an existing church, the Seventh-day Adventist Church, to the east of the property. It's also just east of Breeze Hill Elementary that you can see over on the right-hand side there. Next slide, please. The existing and proposed general plan and zoning are shown in these slides. The exhibits were also included in your packet that was part of the staff report. On the left shows the general plan designation, and the top slide is the existing low-density residential designation you can see on the site and the surrounding area. And on the bottom is the proposal that was submitted by the applicant, the property owner for medium-low-density residential on the subject property. On the right is the zoning, again, a state residential on the top, which is the existing zoning in the surrounding area. And then on the bottom is a single-family residential proposal to rezone the property submitted by the applicant. Next slide. So, in terms of summarizing the proposal that's before you, the current general plan and zoning on the site would permit somewhere between four or five single-family homes on half-acre lots. The proposed general plan amendment and zone change would allow up to 11 single-family homes, as calculated by the applicant. The proposal further utilizes a state density bonus law to increase density by 30% on the site above the R1 zoning designation with the provision of one very low affordable housing unit. With the general plan amendment, zone change, and density bonus that have been submitted, the applicant could develop the site with 15 single-family homes, as proposed, if the council were to support these proposals. I want to make sure that the public and the council are both aware that the staff has not reviewed this proposal for conformity with our code, which includes the density calculations provided as part of the density bonus, lot configuration, street widths, and associated improvements. Those would all have to be reviewed by staff before a formal hearing would occur if a formal, if a formal application is submitted by the applicant. Next slide, please. This is the preliminary proposal that was submitted by the applicant. It's also in your packet. It shows the proposed 15-lot configuration on the site with the density bonus applied. It also includes a private street with a cul-de-sac that would access 11 of the 15 lots and a proposed access to McGovern Drive and McGovern Terrace to the west, which is partially public and private for four of the lots at the top of the map. Again, this project proposal and this design has not been evaluated by staff for conformity with our code, so that would have to occur upon a formal submittal. The idea here is just to give you a concept of how the applicant could develop the lot if the general plan and zone change were supported. Next slide, please. So, as you all know, general plan and zone change requests are at the discretion of the council. They require a formal recommendation by the Planning Commission. If this project were to move forward, it would require both public hearings at both the Planning Commission and City Council. Staff bring all of these preliminary requests for GPAs and zone changes before the City Council for discussion, mentioned at the start of my presentation, to provide the council an opportunity to comment as well as informing the public of the proposal at the start of the project. This is not a final decision, it's only a discussion to provide opportunity for the applicant. So, at this point, the staff is requesting the City Council provide input to the applicant on the proposal. And I know that the applicant has their own presentation that they're planning to provide following staff. So, unless there's any questions for me, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Tammy Temple, who I believe is representing the applicant this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
I do have one question, if that's okay. Just to clarify, so with the density bonus that's being pursued, that would allocate one low-income unit for the property?
That's the proposal that's been submitted by the applicant, that they would include one very low-income unit, which is 50% of the annual median income, which provides them a 30% density bonus.
Just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Yep.
You'll turn it over to Tammy Temple right now.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just, I have the video going, but I don't see myself, which is fine. As long as you're able to hear me, that's all that matters.
We can hear you, and I don't see a video. I only see a slide that says 1205 Melrose Way.
Okay, that's great. I'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Tammy Temple. I work with Dr. Zoran Dejordovic on the project we're going to discuss tonight. Most of you are familiar with Zoran. He's owned property in the city of Vista since 1988. He's lived in the community for several of those years. And he's also been working with city staff for about 14 years, trying to come up with the right project for this piece of property. the right project for this piece of property. There are two key elements that really drove the creation of what we're presenting you tonight. And the first one is that, and you can hold on this slide for me, that would be great. The first element that really started this conversation was the number of applicants that the property owner received when he was looking for tenants to rent the home on this property. He received about 42 applications from young families, single parents, parishioners that worship at the church next door. And it made him really understand and realize the need for affordable housing in the area. The other issue, and I think what we're all dealing with right now, is ramifications of the pandemic. And one of the things that we're seeing as a result of COVID is a lot of people moving from urban areas, small apartment-type living, to the suburbs, where they want to spread out a little bit and have a larger floor plan. I know there's a lot of interest in Oceanside and in the Vista housing market right now as a result of what's presented itself due to the pandemic. So the property owner and his group, which is a local group of consultants, have really worked hard to try to come up with a proposal that would fit this target market. People that are looking for more affordable housing, people that are looking for a walkable lifestyle, and people that can relocate to a more suburban environment where they can spread out a little bit at more affordable prices. The property owner gathered a group of local consultants. Our architects are based in Carlsbad, MMA Architects. I myself am an Encinitas resident and have been involved in developing communities in Encinitas and Oceanside. Ryan Waffle with PLSA is our engineer. He works in North County and is also a Vista resident. So we're all locals. We're very familiar with what's happening in North County, and are invested in working with you and the neighbors to come up with a project that the city can ultimately be really proud of, and the neighbors can be happy with as well. So what we're going to share with you tonight, as John mentioned, is a very high-level preliminary proposal of a small lot community of 15 homes that target the first-time home buyer. This slide is perfect, so you can stay here. You can see the project site is located off of South Melrose Drive and the 78. The location itself is 1205 Melrose and an adjacent lot off of McGovern Terrace. As John referenced in his presentation, the acreage is roughly three acres and currently zoned as low-density residential. We're proposing a change to medium-low-density residential. And the current low-density residential land use would allow the property owner to develop this location into about four lots. Changing the land use to medium-low density would allow about 11 units on the property. And as John referenced, we would like to apply state density bonus, which would allow four additional units, with one of them deemed restricted as very low income. So adding all of this up, the end result is a small lot community of 15 homes. And you can go to the next slide, please. This provides a satellite view of the actual location. It shows 1205 Melrose Way with a single-family home and some outbuildings. You can also see the adjacent lot with access from McGovern Terrace. Next slide, please. And this shows what the land actually looks like today. Next slide, please. The project site is outlined in red, and you can see by the color graphic that it's low-density residential represented with the pale yellow. There is a larger, more dense condo complex located to the north. There's a church and school located to the east, and more residential to the south and the west. What we're proposing is a change in zoning to medium-low-density residential, which is represented by the brighter yellow and is consistent with what is already happening in the area. Next slide, please. So what are our project goals? The goals of the project are to develop a 15-unit small-home community that's targeted to the first-time home buyer. The property owner would like to work with local banks to offer down payment incentive programs or some sort of assistance programs for first-time home buyers. We would like to address safety concerns that are already present on Melrose Way and Melrose Drive. And we'd like to continue working with neighbors and city staff, so the community can be proud of what's developed here. On this site plan, you can see right now how the 15 homes are situated on the property. We have a private road that accesses the first 11 units. And then we also have access for the other four off of McGovern Terrace. Since this is such a high level and just a concept of what we're proposing, we're open to working with the city. As John referenced, we haven't had any comments backed from fire, so, you know, obviously if there's an emergency vehicle access component that's needed, then we're open to that. And if it's better to take access to all 15 units off of Melrose Way, we're certainly open to that, too. This is just a very high-level concept. Next slide, please. Project characteristics. We're proposing 15 lots. The average lot size is 5,100 square feet. I just referenced access to each unit, whether it's from Melrose Way, or it's, if the project is accessible to four units from McGovern Terrace, and the rest of the 11 units accessible from Melrose Way, then we're open to just obtaining the feedback from the community and obtaining the feedback from city. The project is also a, it's a walkable lifestyle for the residents. Families can walk their children to school, to the churches, to local retail. Public transit is close by, as is the 78. Right now, there is a septic system on the property. This project would upgrade to the sewer main. And we, as a project, are open to talking to neighbors to see if they would potentially like to tie into the sewer main. And then we would also like to incorporate a pocket park for families. Next slide, please. This is just a little bit of a look and feel. We consider this a rural look and feel to be consistent with Vista. Again, this is a very high-level concept of a small-scale home. We want to create a community that has a walkable lifestyle for its residents. We'd like to consider incorporating solar and smart home technology as well into these particular homes. Next slide, please. It was really important to us that we reach out to as many people as possible and obtain feedback before we stood in front of you tonight to share this proposal and to obtain feedback from the council. We held individual meetings with city council members. City staff was present to answer questions. We also had phone calls with some of you. We held a neighborhood meeting on January 11th. We really felt it was important to get in front of as many neighbors as possible and learn their initial feedback of what we were proposing. And some of the feedback that we learned, there were questions about traffic, there was question about parking, there were questions about attaching to the sewer. There was also questions about property value and how new development generally impacts neighborhoods and property values. We had outreach with South Vista Communities Board Directors. A couple of these board directors participated in our neighborhood meeting. And we've had subsequent email communication with our neighbors and with the South Vista Community Board Directors as well. And then we've also had conversations with the local church. So we feel like we've gathered a lot of feedback, and we look forward to continuing to work with our neighbors and city council and city staff to see how we can potentially move this project forward. Next slide, please. City benefits. We feel this project benefits the city in that it provides 15 new households that will rely on local services. They will visit stores, they will dine in restaurants, they will use the library, the fitness centers, the schools. We feel there are 15 new homes that will contribute to the RENA requirements. The project also represents an increase in property tax revenue. And the project also adds for-sale homes to the community mix versus for-rent apartment buildings. Next slide, please. Community benefits. I feel the public improvements and the safety measures kind of go hand in hand. We, as a project, have talked about this a lot. And we know that Melrose Way is often used as a cut-through, and sometimes speed can be an issue there. And when you have a street that doesn't have traditional sidewalks and curb and gutter, and you have pedestrians and kids utilizing the street, there can possibly be an environment where there's a car and pedestrian conflict. So we, as a project, feel that it's really important for us to have discussions with staff where we can potentially incorporate speed reduction measures, such as crosswalks or speed bumps or speed humps, potentially digital speed limit signs, or maybe address synchronizing the traffic signals. But as a project, we know the public improvements will be to add curb and gutter and sidewalk along the frontage road, which will also improve site distance. So that will certainly help with safety measures there. We also feel, as a project, that this community would add benefit to the city of Vista because it would be attracting people that are looking to invest in the city of Vista and build their life there and grow into the fabric of the community. This is a community of 15 homes, targeting first-time home buyers, young families, single parents, people that are looking for a walkable lifestyle, people that are looking for the possibility of having an easier commute accessible to the 78 and public transit, and people that are looking to grow their life in a community that is already family-oriented. Next slide, please. Project summary. So again, what we're asking for is a general plan amendment and zone change. We feel that what we're asking for is already consistent with what is already occurring in the area. The project adds 15 homes to Vista's RENA requirements. It represents an increase in property tax revenue for the city. We're attracting first-time home buyers and working with banks to offer incentive programs to make it easier for these first-time home buyers. We're increasing safety with public improvements. The project addresses speed on a busy street. And we're committed to continuing to listen to our neighbors, to work with the city, and hopefully be able to come up with a project that the community is ultimately really proud of. So that concludes our presentation. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as Ryan Waffle. And with that, I'll pass it back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I guess with that, I will check to see if any of our council has any questions. So let's go first, Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just want to say that I am in support of having this come back to council and for our staff to review the plans a little bit more. But definitely, you know, going towards having more affordable housing, having a more walkable community. And at the end of the day, you know, cities are going to have to become more dense. And I feel like this is an opportunity to ensure that the density won't be too high for the area, but also balance between, you know, having more housing opportunities, especially that are affordable and that are targeted to first-time buyers. So I am supportive of this coming back to council and for our staff to review the plans that are going to be brought forth by the owner, property owner. And I'm just curious to see what the development's going to look like. So I have no further comments or questions, but I am in support.
Thank you.
Do I have anybody other that wants to talk about? Councilmember Melendez?
Hello, thank you so much for that presentation. I appreciate all the effort that has been put in so far, especially the effort to talk to the surrounding neighbors. That's really important. I also want to acknowledge to residents who have reached out to me concerning this general plan amendment and zone change. I think that our general plan is really important, and we want to try to align ourselves with it as closely as practicable and as closely as possible, because it does reflect the desires and the vision of our community as a collective. However, I really do echo Councilmember Contreras's comments regarding density and affordable housing. Right, as someone who is a renter myself, it's really attractive to me to see that there's opportunities that are going to be available for, you know, young people like myself, first-time home buyers, who may be able to have accessibility to buying a home, to buying property through decisions like this that may come before the city council. So I really do look forward to future discussions about this topic, especially when we think of, you know, what are going to be the considerations and amenities and, you know, added benefits to this property with the zone change and with the general plan amendment. So I really think that it's a matter of give and take. I can tell that the applicant is, you know, engaging in those kinds of conversations with the public, and I think that that's really important. So I do want to just say that I appreciate all the effort that has been made so far. And for me, I think it'd be really valuable to visit the site, so that's something that I would like to do. We talk a lot about walkability, so I would like to be in the area to be out and about near the property and get a chance to see, you know, what, you know, the landscape really looks like for the neighbors that are, you know, living directly next to that property. So thank you again so much for your efforts, and I look forward to future discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going to see somebody else? If I don't see anybody else, okay, and then I guess I can go. This, actually, this project, I'll put my, I took notes here, I have my glasses. This project came before, it's actually five years ago. I don't know who was the interview on the council that time, I don't know, but I was. And I remember this, but it backs up to the Breeze Hill condos. And the thing is, it's close proximity to the school, so people, families can walk their kids to school and it's close to shopping. And so I think that it kind of provides a buffer there between, you know, by the church, between that and the other neighbors there. And affordable housing is desperately needed in our area. We have, there's actually, in the last couple of days- We have, there's actually, in the last couple of days, I looked, there were like 37 active homes on the market for sale in Vista. There's just nothing much that's out there anymore, as Deputy Mayor knows. When you try to find houses for people, there's just nothing out there. This is like an infill project, you know, with these undersized lots, but we've done that in the past. We've done the undersized lots and we've had positive results. And actually, the ones that we've done recently, there's one on Sycamore, and I was trying to think where the other one was, but they sell, those houses sell before, as quickly as they're built. So I don't know, we have to, I guess, sacrifice maybe lot sizes for, to make, you know, these new homes more affordable. Excuse me. And if we left it to half acre lots, then the homes that they built there are going to be, are going to be like, I'm guessing, eight, in the 800 or 900,000. I, you know, they won't be, the ones that are selling right now in these, the smaller lots and these other ones that we've recently done are in the 700s, the low 700s. So, but I would, I prefer the 10,000 square foot lot, but I think if they, you know, I see how that's kind of lined up like that. I think if they staggered the houses on the lot so that, you know, maybe some are in and some are out, they wouldn't look like such a long row. And I would want to see them be, I just want to see them to be quality. I don't want them to look like a big row of box of houses. I would want them to have a quality house, even though it's a starter house, I want it to be, I don't know what the price point they're thinking of is, but I'm guessing, gosh, even starter homes right now are in the 700s. I know that, actually, the, last year, the 9084, the average price was $595. That was in, that's in 2019, and in 2020, the average price is $670, same house. So it's, they've gone up like 12%. So, and the one question I had is, McGavin Terrace, is that a private road or a public road? We know that? I wonder if...
McGavin is a portion public and a portion private mayor. The first part of it off Melrose Drive is public up to a point, and then it turns into a private road before it reaches the rear parcel of the subject property.
So they'd have to have permission to use that from somebody?
There is a 20-foot easement over that portion of the road to that parcel, but it would likely need to be increased in width in order to subdivide that parcel in the rear.
Okay.
Mayor, I was just going to let you know, there's about 10 speakers at this point, too, when they count their comments.
Okay, well then, let me go back to any of my councilmembers that want to talk, and then I will, anybody else? So we'll go to speakers then. Oh, you want to talk?
I was just going to say, we can hear the speakers first, and then I'll ask my questions, Madam Mayor, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll go to, then we'll go to the speakers.
All right, so the first speaker is going to be Matt. Go ahead, Matt, you have three minutes. Are you there, Matt?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Thank you, I apologize. Thank you for hearing me. I am a resident in the area. My family and I live just down the street at 1520 Melrose Way. This house, well, it's been in the family for about 46 years plus now, one of the first houses built on the street. Some of my major concerns that I've got with this is definitely the traffic is already very congested in the area. There's really no streetlights down most of Melrose Way. There aren't very many sidewalks down most of Melrose Way. The school that is right next door to this bottlenecks the traffic dramatically, and we have to reroute to take other streets in order to avoid this area. Then I'm concerned about 15 houses being put on one property right there in such a small property. I understand some of the stuff that's being said. I'm also a little wary of hearing that one out of 15 homes will be low income, just one. And I believe Mayor Ritter, thank you, I heard you mention that most of the homes around in the area are up in and around the 700,000 or so. And I just personally don't see how, how these homes could be considered for first time buyers if they're going to be selling in those kind of amounts. People have to make a huge income in order to afford that. But more so, I'm really concerned about the traffic. My wife and I have a preschool age daughter, and it's already difficult for us to get her back and forth to the park, walking and traveling by bicycle safely. We usually end up having to go up Mar Sopa close by so that we can have sidewalks and streetlights to safely make our way to the areas that are being mentioned, the park near the school, the shopping centers, the condos and stuff that have been built. I haven't checked myself, but I've heard other people say that they are very expensive, even for a one bedroom, for somebody to rent. So I just don't see the...
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
All right, next is Chris Robbins. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Kathy, can you hear me on the...
Yep, we can hear you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, thanks for taking my comments. I appreciate Councilmember Franklin, I think, earlier talked about, he takes it really seriously when he's going to invoke eminent domain, and I hope you equally take seriously when you make changes to the general plan or the existing zoning. I'm not in favor of a change to the existing City of Vista general plan nor the zoning. You all watched a really nice presentation put on by Tammy Temple. She is Zoran's representative. Unfortunately, you didn't get to meet Zoran, and you didn't get to hear from Zoran, but I attended the meeting that Tammy facilitated on January 11th, 2021, and I specifically asked Zoran about whether he was going to sell his property. He had put up a sign on his property at 1205 that he was going to sell it, and he had a Realtor sign, and a lot of the neighbors talked about it and thought, well, that was probably a good thing. Councilmember Melendez mentioned she'd like to take a look at the property. I'd like you to come out and take a look at the property at 1205 Melrose Way and see what you think of it, and see if it's been really maintained well and is an asset to the community. It's really a poor-looking property, and Tammy Temple's photographs don't show the level of disrepair on this property. Zoran owns the property on the other side of my house. He owns the one we're talking about here. He doesn't live in the neighborhood, and he is not what I would call a good landlord. He doesn't vet his tenants properly. He's quite often a disappointment, and I'm disappointed that he's not here today to, for you to listen to him talk. Finally, I would like to tell you that I would be in favor of Zoran taking the time and effort to develop the property, but keeping it with the existing zoning so he could have five properties on half acre lots to be consistent with what is in the existing neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Next is Andre Gamlin. Go ahead, Andre.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
First, Kathy, I want to say that I did send in a letter to you, and you indicated that it would be added to the packet, and it's not in the packet, so maybe you can check on that and get it added.
I will.
But I'm in opposition as well. I'm a 27-year resident of Melrose Way. And I think that what's missing here is although they have come in and said they've talked to residents, they've just talked to them, they really haven't listened to residents. This is an area that people have bought into because of the charm that's associated with the zoning. There's half acre zone area, there are people that have horses in the area, there's lots of things that are kind of rural and rustic about it. And people that move into this area, they generally have moved here because they like this kind of a community. And so I am not opposed to building in the community, but I think they should do something similar to what was done on Centennial where they split the lot and built three houses and kept with the same zoning. So moving the zoning into something that's more, that's a higher density, this is the third attempt at it that we've had to defend our community. And I think that while I hear what everybody's saying about affordable housing, there's nobody speaking for preserving the charm of our community. And I think you should come down here to our, to our community, take a look at it, talk to some of the residents here, see what they like about this community, before we just decide to make a zoning change and allow someone to come in and disrupt the community. The school makes use of that road there as well, and, you know, if they can't park on that street right there, it's going to be a disruption to the school. We have trash pickup that occurs on that street because we live on an easement. We need to make use of that road for trash pickup. And so if it's parked up, there are going to be problems with pedestrians, with school parking for school events and for drop offs and pickups, and also for trash pickup. So I'm against it. I think most of all of the residents are against it. I think you should come talk to them before you approve any project like this. Thank you.
Next is Leah. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. So I am in favor of the zoning change. I am a single mom living in the area. I work professionally. I would love it to have my daughter's school closer to where I live, where I'm not having to drive from work, then rush to school, then rush to the house to get dinner made. I really do think that there is very low new build homes in Vista area, and what's currently on the market is not really something that's going to work for me. So when I heard that there could be a potential new community coming up, as well as some other moms that I know, we got very excited about it, especially since that's just something that we don't really have in this area. And definitely in favor of new homes coming in. 15 homes is not very many. It's, this is not a 60, 70, 100 tract area. So I don't, I don't understand exactly how it could impact traffic significantly on such a small community, but I am very excited that this is a potential that's coming here in the future for a lot of us that are sitting and renting long term, who would like to be first time homeowners. Thank you.
Could you state your last name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Stalker.
Thank you. Next is Emily Shom. Go ahead, Emily. Emily, are you there? There you go. All right, we don't hear you. Doesn't look like your microphone's off. All right, Emily, I'm going to go ahead and move to someone else, and then we'll try to bring you up back on in a moment. So we'll go to Angela Baumback. Go ahead, Angela.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Angela Baumback. I live at 1520 Melrose Way. I have been a resident in that same house for the last 40, 44 years. I moved in when I was one year old. I have seen Vista grow and grow and grow, for sure. I am absolutely opposed to this, and as I recall, the previous two times that he has attempted high density housing, there was a huge room full of people that were not in favor of this, and only he and his wife or partner were in approval of this. We still don't want this in our community. It's not, not only is it practical built, not built for this, but it is also not a part of the mystique of our nice little rural slice of Vista. It's, going over the presentation, I've got so many notes, I don't even know where to begin. As far as curbs go, it's probably going to be only about 100 feet of new curb to be added because of the face of the property. That's not okay. As far as attractive in the, in the community, high density housing in this part is just not attractive. It's not attractive to us, and it is antithetical, matter of fact, to what it is that we've built in our community. We are not high density nor medium high density. It is also unfortunate when I hear a councilmember say, it's a sacrifice that we must make. No, you don't live there, we live here. I beg you to allow us to shape and form our piece of our community the way that we are already and the way that we want it to go. We've, once again, are here for the third time talking about this, and we've begged him, please build to the way the density housing is currently. He is not, even in spite of pandemic, before pandemic, he was asking for this level of density or larger before. It's not because of pandemic. This is the way he wants to do business, and I understand that, but this is not the community to do this. The school, once again, as other people have said, creates a massive overflow of traffic. It's just not conducive to be able to do it even on that street. They already have sidewalks there. And it's like, it was mentioned before, a huge bottleneck. Is, I'm just going over and over all of this. It's not consistent with, with the way, the consistency of the neighborhood is not going in the direction of high density. It's not there.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. All right, um, let's try Emily again. Emily, are you there? Go ahead, Emily. Can you try to turn your volume on? I'm sorry, we're not hearing anything. And go ahead and go to the next speaker. All right, let's go to Betty. Go ahead, Betty, if you'd please give us your last name as well. Betty, if you could unmute, there you go. Are you there?
Folks can use the telephone to dial in if they're having trouble with their microphone, is that right, Kathy?
Yes, thank you, actually, that's a good suggestion. I'll give out that phone number in just a minute. Let me go ahead and get on to the next person. Let's go to Amanda Olivias. Go ahead, Amanda.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. I am a local Realtor, and I just wanted to speak in favor of this project. Madam Mayor, you mentioned earlier that there are only 28 homes on the market... Madam Mayor, you mentioned earlier that there are only twenty-eight homes on the market in Vista currently and that is one hundred percent correct. There's a severe housing shortage that's happening right now and I, you know, having fifteen new homes would be a tremendous asset to the community. In addition to the fact that they'd be geared towards first-time home buyers, I think that's huge that they're incentivizing first-time home buyers because those are the people that are being hit the hardest in this housing market right now. They just can't compete out on the resale market because homes are going for thirty, fifty, a hundred grand over asking price with the bidding wars. So if, you know, a lot of people's best chance as a first-time home buyer is to go with a new build directly from a builder because there is no bidding war. So I think that's huge. In addition to that, I think, you know, this would be a huge increase to surrounding neighbors' property values as well as new families pumping money back into the community. So I, I just want to speak in favor of that.
Thank you very much. All right, so the information for calling in is on the cover sheet. I'll read it off, but it's kind of a lot of information. The telephone number is six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. The webinar ID is eight, two, zero, zero, two, one, eight, four, eight, five, two. And the password is five, five, six, three, one, seven. So we'll move on to our next speaker, David Aldana, Aldana, sorry. Go ahead, David.
This is actually David and Susan Aldana. We are the property owners at 740 McGovern West of the, the, the plan. What I would just like to start off with saying, it was interesting to hear this presentation. As one of the property owners who's probably most impacted by this, I have yet to hear from the applicant, haven't been asked for any input and certainly disagree with her comment that all of the neighbors have provided input. So with that said, I guess I would say that we are not in favor of this. We've lived in Vista and had this property since nineteen eighty-five and bought this property because of the low density. I'm not sure how a very low affordable housing unit would add value to my property, which the realtor just mentioned. And again, as it was stated before, it's, it's fine for everyone else who doesn't live in the neighborhood to tell us that it's going to be great for our property values when those people are not living in this area. So I would be happy to provide input or listen to the applicant if this does go forward. But again, for the record, this is the first time that we've heard of this as of this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay. Next is Ben Williams. Go ahead, Ben.
Yes, I just took it off of mute. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ben Williams and I'm a local real estate agent with Coldwell Banker and I've lived in the area since nineteen seventy-nine. And I've watched these areas grow and, you know, change. In fact, when I was very young, I, I dated the, the family, the, the girl whose family owned Robertson Ranch and that was a big flower field and growing field and so forth. And we'd love for everything to stay the same, you know, we'd love to. But times change and, and things change and, and needs change. And, you know, I'm working every day showing real estate and I, I have my finger on the pulse of the market. And there, there is only six homes currently on the market, six houses in nine, two, zero, eight, one. So there is a very limited inventory. So this, this need exists. And, you know, these different neighbors, I feel for them. I'd love for things to always stay the same. I miss Carlsbad Racetrack, quite frankly. You know, it used to be a motorcycle racetrack and a drag strip. But, you know, things change and they have to change and, and different real estate products come about. When I say different real estate products, for example, on Buena Vista Drive. On Buena Vista Drive, there's a, a housing project over there where they did these homes that are rather close together and they call it detached condos. And it was a way for us to, to get houses. And, you know, with COVID, people, what, what I'm hearing from buyers is, gosh, I gotta get out of this condo and I gotta get into a house. I can hear my neighbors coughing. You know, so people want to live in a house and we, and, and, and I feel for these neighbors, okay? And I hear them, you know, they've lived here for thirty-five years and, and they're worried about values and so forth and I can speak to that. But I think all of these neighbors live beyond this project. So the traffic for this project is most likely going to come from the major thoroughfare. It's going to come from Melrose. It's not going to go by their house. Each one of those homeowners who's described where they live are beyond this project. And I think fifteen people going by a school and going by a church to go to this project. And a lot of the people are going to walk their children and their children are going to walk to school. So I think the, the amount of traffic is almost inconsequential. I'm sure they don't want to see one more person or two more people. But I think that that's, I, I don't think it's as big of an impact as they might think just because it's changed. You know, there, there's a need, there's a need that, that, this is an opportunity, this is a great location. Is every location perfect? No. Is this one very good? It's, it's almost ideal. It's so close to Melrose.
And I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jamie Nelson. Go ahead, Jamie. Are you there, Jamie? Go ahead, Jamie. I'm sorry, we're not hearing you. All right, try unmuting it one more time and let's see if we can hear you. Sorry, we're not hearing you. And go ahead and try Emily and Betty one more time and then we'll have to move on. Go ahead, Emily, let's try this one more time. Emily, can you unmute? All right, we're gonna move on to Betty. All right, Betty, let's try this again. Are you there? Go ahead, Betty. I'm sorry, we're not hearing you. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the next person. All right, Shamika Baumback. Go ahead, Shamika.
Hey, I'm, I'm, okay, I'm, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Eve Baumback. I'm her grandmother. And, okay, I've been here since nineteen seventy-seven. And I'm telling you, it's crazy. Since you guys came in and put on Breeze Hill, there's all those condos. We didn't even know we had this meeting. And that's another thing. You only give us three minutes? That's ridiculous. But anyway, Breeze Hill, you have apartments or condos, I don't know what they are. But ever since you had those up, we had a lot of horrible traffic, accidents, theft. I have a lot of stuff, people coming into my property and stealing from me. And you want low income coming in here? Oh, thank you, but no, I have to say no. And, you know, it's ridiculous, seriously. I don't know what's wrong with you people. But, you know, obviously you don't care about people, you care about the money. And, you know, I, I'm sorry, but you, and we didn't even know about this happening. Ever since I lived here, I never got one notification, you guys are having meetings. And a lot of my other neighbors are this same. So I, I want ratification on this. I want, I want the neighbors to know what you guys are doing and what you're hiding because you're, you're hiding this from a lot of us and that's not okay. So, you know, I'm sorry, but I, I don't know who's doing this or who's in charge of letting people know. And, oh, I'm sorry, your time's up, you know? You could bite me because this is not okay. And shame on you, seriously. And, and, and I'm sick of people, people stealing from me and all these housing came in on Breeze Hill and now you want more people to come in and we already have a lot of traffic problems. And since the school came and people are buzzing up and down. My son-in-law got hit by a car. My police officer hit my mailbox, wiped it out. And, you know, there's, there's too much traffic. There's too many people. On Melrose Way, are you kidding me? We have too many people. There are too friggin' many people already. Help us get rid of them. Stop this insanity. I mean, what do you want, more and more? What, what's going on here? Who, who's getting paid under the table for having so many, so many people crammed into this lifestyle? And, you know, we have people come into our, my home. They came into my home, walked in my door. And, you know, I just have crazy people here. What's going on? And you want more people to come in? Like, do you matter? I know, I know, thank you.
All right, let's try Jamie Nelson. Go ahead, Jamie. Are you there?
Hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
You can hear me now.
I can hear you now.
I'm, I'm Curtis's, I'm Curtis Nelson, Jamie's husband at twelve twenty-two Melrose Way.
Thank you.
I am firmly opposed to this. We bought this area because it's an old rural area. You add more people to this area, it's crazy. And these realtors, who paid these people to get on here? Realtors, are you kidding me? All they're after is money and more property to sell. Let them come over here to this property and look at our old rural street, why these people live here. This is why we're here. You're gonna add fifteen houses times four people. It's gonna be crammed in here. And then we don't want speed bumps, we don't want lights. We have a little slice of old country here. And now we're gonna stick more houses in here, you know, like, like my neighbor said. Why don't you, why doesn't he build four million-dollar houses instead of cramming fifteen houses in there? Which is gonna impact our whole neighborhood. Our, this, nobody wants it on this street. I don't know who this guy is. He's tried this before and it hasn't worked and he's a liar. I've heard him lie. He said he would never try to sell that property and he did. This guy needs to go away or build on half-acre lots like this is Zone Four. Or get away, leave, leave us alone. We like our old rural street just the way it is. We don't want, we already have enough traffic with the school, people up and down this road. He says it's like a, it's, it's not like, it's totally like Melrose on this street here. We don't need any more traffic. So obviously, I'm opposed to it. This is the third time, like our neighbor said. Nobody wants it around here, except the realtors, apparently. They don't live around here. We don't want it. Thanks for my time. Tell the guy to go away, go somewhere else.
Thank you, Curtis.
Sure.
All right, that is it for public speakers. So we will go ahead and close the opportunity for public comment at this time.
Yes, Mr. Conley.
I did speak to one resident, Mary Ann, Mary Amos Fields, who lives at eight eleven Centennial Drive. That's a property directly south of this project site. She couldn't attend the meeting tonight, but she did want to register her opposition to the zone change in general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that, going back to speakers, yes, Deputy Mayor.
All right, since we don't have any more speakers, I'll add my two cents to the project. That's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am very familiar with Melrose Way. I actually used to live off of Ridge Road, kind of a, at the top of Melrose Way. It turns into Ridge Road. When it hits sunset, it goes to that whole rural area. And it is a cut through. And if this project was located in the thirteen-hundred block of Melrose Way or somewhere that wasn't immediately adjacent to the church or the school and also actually touching the Breeze Hill complex, I would be extremely opposed to it because I feel like it would definitely affect the character of the community. You know, it'd be a huge impact on the community. This isn't right in the middle of the community. It is adjacent to two basically commercial properties. You know, you got a school there, you got a church there. So putting in development in this particular location of Melrose Way, I don't think is gonna be a huge impact to those located at the end of Melrose Way. I do understand the resident twelve twenty-two and the resident eight eleven, they're directly across the street from this property and I'm sure they'd love to see it undeveloped. But we do have arena requirements as far as homes that need to be met. There is a lack of affordable housing. And I don't want to give the wrong idea when it comes to affordable housing that we're slamming a high-density affordable complex in here, as some of the callers had stated. These properties will be what I would consider median homes that would be priced, small fifty-five hundred square foot lots, but they are going to be detached homes. One thing that I am opposed to is the project being accessed off of McGovern Lane or McGovern Lane, that street back there. I know there is a small easement for ingress and egress, but I think that if you have access from that backside, you will have a lot of residents coming in the community from the backside and it will be a more, it will be more impactful to the tail end of that community that's so concerned. Additionally, it affects all of the residents on McGovern, kind of cutting through their neighborhood and accessing the back. I would say that since it's a development, perhaps that could be a fire access for safety purposes, maybe a secondary access for fire. But I would recommend a flag-shaped lot for ingress and egress for those back three units that were listed on the parcel. And if they can't fit a easement for ingress and egress back there, maybe they have to get rid of a unit in order to accommodate that. Because I think having two accesses to fifteen units is a lot. It is only fifteen homes. There are only gonna be, you know, two to three cars and they should be able to accommodate access by one entry point off of Melrose Way and provide a fire access on the backside, but not a resident access on the backside. So that's my take on entrances and exits on it. As far as the affordable aspect of it goes, I know we said only one affordable unit and we gave them three bonus units so that they could put fifteen units here. I'd also like to look at the possibility of a down payment assistance program that possibly the city could work in conjunction with, maybe a silent second type of program with that down payment assistance. I want to make sure everybody knows Carlsbad's Rancho Correo area, which is right off of South Melrose over there and Palomar Airport Road, that entire area of Rancho Correo, those townhomes, were all affordable housing. The city of Carlsbad offered a silent second and a silent third so that people could afford to purchase those houses with the stipulation that they would be owner-occupied for a certain amount of time. After they were owner-occupied for thirty years, which is a very long time, either the second would be forgiven or if it was sold prior to that timeframe, the city would get a portion of the equity, would be an equity share. So it'd be a great business opportunity for the city of Vista as far as property appreciation and things goes with a silent second or down payment assistance program. I also like the stipulation of selling this project to first-time home buyers. Not necessarily, you know, affordable housing. I mean, first-time home buyers are people who've had jobs for a couple of years and make reasonable incomes, but they are getting priced out of this market right now. And these smaller lots do a And these smaller lots do allow for more home buyers to get into these properties. So um, I'm not opposed to this development. I do think a lot more community involvement needs to happen. But I think the location of the development, the fact that it's not high density, these are single-family detached homes that are going into the community in close proximity to a very walkable area and neighborhood. So uh, they definitely have their work cut out for them. But I think that this is something that could be a win for both the city and the community of Vista. And down payment assistance programs, making them affordable for our residents, anything that we could do to get first-time home buyers in properties and switch from being renters to homeowners, I think behooves us as a city for building communities. So thank you so much for your time, thank you for the presentation.
Okay, so um, I, Councilmember Franklin, do you have anything to add or you just?
Yeah, I do. Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Can you still see me, am I still motion?
I can see you, but I don't see your mouth moving.
Yeah, I, I, this is the third computer freeze I've suffered tonight. It'd be time for a new machine. I apologize if you see me disappear and rejoin the meeting because my computer froze. Uh, so as long as you can see my face, I will, without reconnecting, give you my thoughts. I did have the opportunity to meet with Zaron five years ago and saw the proposal that he made then. Uh, that proposal clearly did not fit uh, with the surrounding community. And we heard that from the neighbors. This proposal's different. Uh, it's got more merit than the previous proposal, there's no question about that. There's also no question that we do need more housing. Uh, everywhere, there is a housing shortage. But the, I want to say for everybody on the line that we are doing a, a design review right now. And what that means is, this is an opportunity to come before the council to receive early feedback before the complete process plays itself out. And what that means is that this general plan amendment and this, uh, John, is this gonna be a condo map?
It would be a subdivision map.
Subdivision. So uh, the, the subdivision map would have to go separately. Uh, could go in the same meeting, but it would have to be a separate item from the, uh, the general plan amendment?
Correct.
Okay. So we've got, you know, numerous opportunities that would come in the next, probably we're looking at it, you know, most of a year at least, uh, to go through the formal planning process, come before the planning commission and allow the developer to work with the residents to see if they can find common ground. And I think it's reasonable, uh, at this time to go ahead and invite the developer to proceed with the process. And that's really what the developers here tonight is to ask, is there enough, you know, is there enough interest in us even pursuing the proposal that's been made? So the council tonight is not making an approval of this item. We are simply giving what is called an early review where we're offering our thoughts well in advance of the formal process. But I, I think I speak for most of us when I say, uh, we will not make a final decision. I will not certainly until this goes through the formal planning process. Uh, and it may still come before the city council again, uh, after it goes through the, uh, the planning commission process. So that's where I'm at on it right now.
Okay, so um, Director Conley, do you have enough information from us?
Yes, I do, Mayor, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, with that, um, we'll move on, um, oral communications. So um, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on agency-related matters that are not on the agenda. If any members of the public wish to address the city council, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or by pressing star nine now. So City Clerk Valdez, do you have any members of the public that wish to provide oral communication?
I don't have my mic on. I have one person with a hand raised. I had um, some emails, I think a couple other people might want to speak. So again, if you want to speak on oral communication, please raise your hand. Uh, let's see. So the first is Ben Williams. Ben, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, and I'll take just a minute or so, uh, just to kind of finish what I was talking about earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry, you can't speak on the same item, your time was up.
Oh, okay. It was, it's a different item, I mean, a different point, okay.
All right, thanks. All right, we'll move on to Judy Strang. Go ahead, Judy.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to speak, Judy Strang, mother and grandmother of three Vista school-aged children. I want to thank Karina and Katie for bringing the youth advocates that we heard this evening. Rudy and Tino were excellent examples of the sort of people in Vista who help our young people. And I appreciated hearing about their programs. I have a son who is a Vista soccer coach and first children that play soccer. So Tino's presentation meant a lot to me. I'm just here on behalf, behalf of the young people of Vista. Something that I continue to hear from parents and at my PTA meetings that we're now holding via Zoom is their concern for deliveries of alcohol and marijuana to minors. And so I would like to respectfully encourage you to talk to your sheriff about conducting minor decoy operations and protect our youth. We had hopes that the Bureau of Cannabis Control out of Sacramento was going to put some enforcement in place. That has not happened. They say that it may be quite a little while before they would offer grants to law enforcement to do those. So it's probably going to fall to all of us to protect our young people by doing at least this activity. Minor decoy operations can be quite successful. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Becky Rapp. Go ahead, Becky.
Good evening, Vista City Council. I too greatly appreciated the presentations by Rudy Moreno and Tino from Tiffany's International Soccer Club. As my comments mirror greatly. My name is Becky Rapp, I'm a mother to three teens and a youth group mentor. Today, I'd like to bring to your attention Supervisor Desmond's heroic efforts with the Let Them Play Initiative in which many families across the city are joining. Many teens have resorted to club sports who travel with their teams over state borders to play in tournaments. Sadly, the majority of youth in our county can't afford these expensive activities, leaving them home worrying about their ability to play and how they will compare to many of their teammates who never stopped playing. As you can imagine, this is a very difficult time for teens as anxiety and mental health issues rise. Many are home feeling isolated without positive role models that they would have otherwise received through coaches and teachers. As isolation continues and eleven months have passed since schools and sports were open, we are seeing a direct correlation that shows increase of marijuana use among teens. A recent study showed that since COVID nineteen social distancing began, the frequency of marijuana use in adolescents increased. Forty-nine percent of those teens misusing marijuana are using in isolation and at home alone. Mass commercialization and marketing of marijuana to youth decreases the perception of harm and suggests long-term negative effects on our teens. This combined with the physical interaction like sports is a disaster for adolescents. Today, I ask you to join Supervisor Desmond in the Let Them Play Initiative, giving hope to the disadvantaged. Let's create a more equitable city, giving fair and equal playing to those most vulnerable, sending a message of support to youth. Teens getting outside and playing sports will only help to increase hope in their futures instead of increasing the time and opportunity at home getting high. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Angela Baumbach. Go ahead, Angela.
Hello. I am concerned that especially in our, our little piece of the community, um, stretching on Melrose Way, that we are not adequately apprised of the goings-on on zoning changes or developments. We have had several occasions where we have not been informed. Um, and we usually hear word of mouth rather than through direct communication, either through the city or through the developers making the proposals. Not sure exactly what needs to be done to change this, but I am requesting some sort of connection to us and our community, especially in the median areas surrounding where the developments are going to be.
Thank you. Okay. That is it, we have no other speakers, we'll close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could I, could I ask Mr. Conley to just give us a, a quick uh, review of our online development tool? So that everybody knows how to find all of the development. We have a wonderful online map tool and I wonder if Mr. Conley could give a very short review of that for the public?
You're referring to the planning project website? Yeah. So uh, on the city's website under community development, um, we have a link. And we also have a link under our GIS system, um, for planning project map that's uh, in the city's um, GIS system that shows all of the proposed developments that are active um, in the city right now. So those are projects that have been submitted or have been approved and not built or that are under construction. The Zone Change in General Plan Amendment proposals don't get on the list until they are formally submitted. So these discussion items that we hold for the preliminary reviews are not on the map because they haven't submitted a formal application yet. Our notification procedures for these are that we send out notice to all the properties within five hundred feet and we post it um, on the city's website as well as sending out a notice to all those who have signed up for our planning notices online.
How do we find that map tool at cityofvista.com?
Uh, if you go into the website, it's under the GIS maps. There's a link for GIS which uh, I can pull up here real quickly and make sure is under city services. It lists GIS and city maps. And under that, there is a, a number of interactive maps that show council districts, street sweeping, zoning, you name it. One of them is City of Vista Planning Projects. And if you click on that, it'll show you where everything is that's active.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think that takes us to our remarks. I'll do mine first and then I'll um, pass it to each council member. So I want to do, I want to thank you to the Vista Chamber of Commerce for hosting our annual State of the Community event yesterday. This year, due to the pandemic, the, uh, event was held virtually. Um, my State of the City address broadcast and the list of the city's significant twenty twenty accomplishments is imposed to our social media sites and on the city website at cityofvista.com if you want to listen to that. So um, and also um, this, um, Vista Unified School District was there yesterday and Superintendent Matt Doyle, the Superintendent of Schools for the Vista Unified School District. And I um, showed our appreciation with a, with a recognition to the members of the school board and proclaimed the month of January twenty twenty, twenty-one as School Board Recognition Month in the City of Vista and the Vista Unified School District. So I signed a proclamation with Supervisor Superintendent Matt Doyle and regarding that. Our senior center has continued to offer weekday meal pickup and delivery for our older residents during the pandemic. Uh, for more information on that, check the city website at cityofvista.com. And registration is now open for Vista Recreation's preschool weekday programs. Hours of operation and registration information are also online at vista recreation.com. So that is the, and not my announcements right now. I will go to council comments and I will start with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, not a whole lot, other than just saying thank you yesterday for the State of the Community address. Did a great job, it was awesome to see everything that's going on in the city and everything we've accomplished. And I loved the video, I know it was virtual this time, so it's kind of hard to pull off. But the video driving down the new Paseo Santa Fe project completed was so cool. I was so excited about that. So great job Vista Chamber, great job Madam Mayor. And with that, everybody have a great Taco Tuesday. Lord knows, there's lots of good tacos in this town. See you.
Okay, Councilmember Contreras.
Well, I want to thank my colleagues for another great council meeting. We always have uh, really important discussions before us and presentations that come before us. And I want to thank the commute, the community as well for attending this council meeting. Hopefully it will not be uh, your last one. Um, and I do want to say, Madam Mayor, uh, it was fabulous to see the state of the city. And I want to give a big shout out um, to the Chamber of Commerce and to Film Hub. Uh, Film Hub has just been a tremendous asset to our community and I uh, look forward to seeing uh, them grow. Um, and I do want to say that my weekly trash pickups on that used to be every Wednesday at nine AM at Luzduran Park, they're still on hold, uh, but I will be communicating with my team captain again. And uh, we're gonna see if we can bring back uh, starting uh, the first Wednesday in February. Um, other than that, I want to thank the presenters that came forward. I know there's a lot of nonprofits in our community uh, that are facing uh, you know, new challenges. Uh, if it wasn't already hard to be a nonprofit, it's become harder. So uh, I really appreciate my colleagues uh, taking the time to listen attentively to just two of our nonprofits. Um, and I do look forward to um, bringing some more discussion to the council as to what we can do to help our youth. Um, because again, this is a city goal that we have and we know how important it is to establish uh, good citizenry at a very young age. I know I benefited from it and I've seen others in my community, community benefit from it. And I know it is proven, uh, and there's something that we can always do to better our community. But thank you so much uh, to my coworkers on staff for all the hard work that you do. I want to give a shout out also to our firefighters and um, our first responders. Uh, it's been very, very difficult. Um, and I know I continuously am hearing sirens and I know that the pandemic is not going away. Um, and it's hitting our community pretty hard. Um, with that, I just want to send blessings to our first responders and uh, and blessings to you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Franklin. Oh, I think you're muted.
Thank you, I don't have anything additional tonight.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Councilmember Melendez.
Awesome, thank you all so much for a great meeting. Um, I just want to say thank you to staff and all of our presenters. Um, again, I really appreciate all the work that our nonprofit organizations are doing here in Vista. I want to give credit where credit is due. So thank you, Honorable Councilmember Contreras, for collaborating with these organizations and bringing in, you know, in really important presentations uh, to our view. Uh, and I do want to let residents of Vista know that the City of Vista is um, accepting applications for our boards and commissions. That is going to be ongoing, I believe, uh, into mid-February. And I highly encourage everyone to get involved in the things that they're most passionate about. Um, you can find more info, of course, at cityofvista.com. But also, um, feel free to email me directly, K Melendez, M E L E N D E Z, at cityofvista.com. I, I really believe in the power of these community boards and commissions to um, diversify our decision-makers and create a really strong, um, you know, community-led government. And I appreciate everyone's thoughtful comments tonight. Uh, you know, and all of the folks who were able to participate in the meeting over Zoom. It's really important that you show up, it's really important that you engage like this because it does make a difference. So again, have a lovely night, blessings to you and your family, please stay safe and good night.
Okay, and our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and following up with Mr. Conley's information on the planning map process, we also encourage all residents to sign up for the planning notices on the city's website. This will allow you to find out what's being planned, what might be going on in the community. And uh, you can never say that you didn't know about it, uh, if you're signed up for that. So it's one item. Uh, did want to let everybody know that the Public Works Department was very busy last week in particular, uh, preparing for the rainstorms that we had. Uh, the good news is that we fared The good news is that we fared very well. We only had a few tree branches down, I think a light pole and very minor issues and some pooling of water in some of the normal locations that subsided. These next, the next rainstorm, which is expected to be here Thursday and Friday, is supposed to have with it an atmospheric river. And it's been a few years since we've had the last one of those. So hopefully we will fare the same and have the same positive results over the weekend. So great job of Public Works. The governor this week lifted the stay at home order. And so what that means is the County of San Diego falls back into the purple tier. The good news with the lifting of the stay at home order is that we are no longer linked to LA. So our numbers will, they'll rest on the county's numbers and not the Southern California region numbers. So being in the purple tier, basically what that means today at least is that restaurants can reopen for outdoor use, that salons can reopen and personal services can reopen as well. There's some other issues that are, that are part of that, but those are the main issues that the public will experience. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that the county just announced that they expanded the availability of the vaccination process to those who are sixty-five and older. If you remember, it was just healthcare workers and first responders as well as those who are seventy-five and older. And so now they've adjusted that to sixty-five and older. So you can go to the county website, which is coronavirussd.com and click on the vaccine portion of that website and sign up. It's by appointment only. So thank you.
Thank you. I was very excited to get my COVID shot because I'm over seventy-five. Yeah, me too. Got shot one. Okay, so let's see now. How about our city attorney, Gerald Piper? Do you have anything tonight?
No comments this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. How about our city clerk, Kathy Melendez?
I was actually going to talk about the commission. So thank you, Councilwoman Melendez, for doing that. I do want to mention the due date is February eighteenth and districts two and three will be appointing. So if you have questions, certainly reach out to me or to Deputy Mayor Green or Councilmember Melendez. Thank you.
Super. So that brings us to, to the end. And I just want to, this evening, I want to adjourn our meeting to this evening in honor of Carrie Hostetler, the Ticket Office Supervisor in Recreation and Community Services who sadly passed away on Friday, January twenty-second. Carrie was a bright light who excelled at customer service and always made her customers feel very special. She'll be missed by all of us at the city, her friends, family and the Vista Ticket Office regulars. And I am one who will miss her a lot. She was always friendly and upbeat and, and we're going to miss her. So with that, I will adjourn our meeting.